You might want to move that one speaker between you two, just so we can pick up the up your. There you go. That will pick you all up better. All right, let me know. And you're recording? Great. Um, welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M., and we're called to order. And I'll do the roll call. Uh, Commissioner Daniel. Not present. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Kotak.
Here.
Great. Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Great. Vice Chair Stab.
Here.
Great, and me, Commissioner Robbins. We've got a quorum, so we'll move ahead. Um, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? And it's not on the agenda, but our minutes will be coming at a future date. So, no changes. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Um, how about Commissioner Reports? Anybody want to talk about what you've been doing or seeing around town? All right, let's go to Director's Report, Dan Brad.
So Deputy Sharon will be starting on Thursday.
Right.
Meeting on the twenty eighth of May. Um, everything is set. Got the computer out of the box. Desk is set. All we have to do is wait. Uh, for both the Comprehensive Plan and the Development Code Updates, uh, both ordinances have been, are going to be going out for CPO later this week, so. Public. Also, both of those ordinances, everything else was sent to Congress on Monday. So there, notice from CAFD, which is a sixty-day review of any updates that we make on code. So, we expect comments back from them. We know they got them, but they sent us a letter saying we got it, but this happens. Um, and then the last item I've got is both Dan and Erica went to the Washington Chapter of UAPA Conference in Dakota last week, and they would like to share a little bit about their.
Great, right now? Yeah. The new system.
So, yeah, we attended the conference Wednesday through Friday. There was a lot of housing discussion, metal housing, some of the jurisdictions there, comprehensive plans were due twenty twenty-four, ours is due twenty twenty-five, and then there were some attending there because it was a statewide conference for the twenty twenty-six. So, it was great to hear perspectives on jurisdictions that have already done and implemented their comprehensive plan, what's working, what was hard, and how they approached it. And then also, we got to hear about some new legislative bills that are being proposed for this new legislative session coming up, more housing-related bills. So that was interesting. And then, um, we went, both Dan and I went to a session about updating tree codes. So, know that's on the proposed work plan for next year, and we've already done some preliminary, preliminary work on updating that. So, that was interesting to attend the session on. And then, Dan.
Yeah, I think, um, I think the main focus is housing and then looking toward implementation because we have all, a few jurisdictions that are working on that, and it was great to see, um, how practical and, and some practical approaches to this pretty monumental task that's before us, um, in terms of making these ideas into reality on the ground. And then, um, so one of the big takeaways was in terms of, for me, was in terms of, um, making sure that we're scaling our efforts correctly. Like, we have this big idea, and it, and the idea itself is very powerful, and we can implement it at the right scale effectively. Um, but if we always keep everything too big, then, um, then the implementation will never happen. So, um, and really, and a call to, and encouragement to getting projects and real tangible things out on the ground for our community as soon as possible. So, I wanted to encourage, I hope that encourages you as well, that that's what we're hearing from our counterparts, and, um, that's something that I hope that we aim to do and can, can carry out. And then also this call within our community to, um, embed ourselves in the community as we plan, and making sure that, um, while you are a very responsible body and represent the community, we all, we are also reaching out to the community broadly and making sure that their voices are implemented and heard in this plan, uh, through some of the outreach that we're already doing, like the Food System Table, Air Food Bank tabling, excuse me, and, um, just being active, uh, members in our, active for our community in the community events that are already planned and, and, um, the concerts that we've attended to reach out and just making ourselves more visible as a part of the process and how we, um, move things forward. And, yeah, that was very encouraging. And, like Erica said, using that tree code, um, to even start, uh, looking again at what we did before this fall and make some strides forward and, uh, and make sure that work is implemented.
Good. That's pretty cool. I'm glad you all got to go to that.
Thank you for my, for.
Yeah. They're always cool. Um, let's see, anything else, Brad?
Oh, I apologize. Uh, one other thing, I, we have a new schedule for the Comprehensive Plan, we'll touch on that.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Um, let's go to public comment. Uh, we have a couple of guests here tonight. Would either of you or both of you like to address the Planning Commission on any matters briefly? All right? Well, we appreciate your being here. I don't think anybody is online. Don't see any attendees. All righty, did, uh, Brad, uh, did you hear from anybody in the interim since last meeting?
I didn't receive that call.
All right. All right. Let's go on to item number seven, then, the, um, ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero nine, the final docket for the twenty twenty-five Comprehensive Plan amendments. Brad, or?
Uh, tonight, we'll be talking about the waters who are in stormwater, parts of the Capital Facilities Plan, and Director of Water Resources is only Dan Smith will be doing a presentation and answering questions. Similar to the performance from the last one.
Very good. All right, take it away, Dan.
All right. Well, thanks for having me tonight. I recognize some of your faces and a lot of stuff here, and, you know, I am from the East Coast, and I've been hopped up by caffeine and Diet Cokes all day, so if I go too fast, just slow me down and feel free to interrupt me, you know, if any questions come up for you as we go along. Um, I know you just kind of went through this with Brandon, uh, recently, so, uh, it was the beginning part of it, and so I'm going to not try and repeat too much of that. I did steal his presentation for the format. See I'm coming through? There we go. All right. There we go. All right. So, kind of jumped right in, you know, what was, what was Brandon talking about last week? You know, basically, just, you know, it's kind of a reminder that this is part of the city's Comprehensive Plan, this isn't a financial commitment. Um, the city, you know, this is really just kind of a forecast of projects as we look ahead into the future. Um, you know, you know, this is a six-year look as we, as we prepare for our Comprehensive Plans with utilities, we're actually looking, you know, six years and then twenty years and then beyond, you know, looking at where our facilities need to be. Um, this isn't a financial commitment, as I said, that would be appropriated next year when we work on the budget. Um, and these numbers are constantly shifting in here. And so I think actually the, probably the packets you have in front of you might be even slightly different than the packets I have, and they'll probably be even different by the time they go to council because we're constantly playing with the numbers and, and looking at that, and I'll show you kind of what I mean as I get farther along. Last time, you talked, you talked with Brandon about the non-utility projects, the general government and the transportation projects. Tonight, we're going to talk about the three utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater. Um, and as you know, um, you know, these projects come from a myriad of different places, um, from the reports that we put together, from operator knowledge of the system of what's going on out there, what deficiency we're experiencing, and in the process, as we identify future needs. So, for the utilities, we have three funds, water, sewer, storm. We have about a total of fifty projects between, uh, three, the three utilities, um, about a hundred and ten million dollars worth of projects over the next six years. Uh, and that's, you know, to be honest, that's, that's somewhat of a, of an ideal situation if we're able to get all the projects done within that timeframe, you know, that's what we'd be looking at. But as you, as you're probably very aware, these projects do shift in time as we move through this, as we move through it. Um, and as part of that, you know, you probably saw some of these projects last time, and so today, I'm really going to focus on new projects that are in here, and I'm happy to cover any projects that exist on the CFP that you might have questions about. Um, and, you know, for the water fund and similar with, with the other two, um, they, they cover various aspects of the utility operations, but the funds that we dedicate in these utilities can, that we receive revenues from those utilities, those monies can only be spent on those utilities. So, any kind of funds that we collect for stormwater can't be spent in water, sewer can't be spent in water, and vice versa to the other utilities as well. Um, just as we don't collect monies for general fund, although we do charge revenue or utility tax, that is basically the utility's contribution to the general fund. Um, for the water fund, we're looking at projects that span our programs, um, our, our wellhead protection, our water conservation programs, we're looking at, uh, making sure that our facilities are safe and they're protected, um, not only from just a water quality standpoint, but also from, uh, um, you know, terrorism attacks or an earthquake, you know? So we're making sure that they're resilient, they're redundant, and that we have the, the hard infrastructure, so to speak, the integrity there to protect them from any kind of other issues that we might see. Um, one of the projects on our, on our list this year, um, we're in, last year as well, or last, last round as well, is, uh, well fifteen improvements, and that's where we're looking at water quality. We have good water quality, we're in compliance, um, with all of the, uh, the state and federal standards, um, you know, but per the, per some of the work that we've done with Department of Health, we can do a little bit better. And so that's where, you know, one of our projects is looking at improving that water quality situation, uh, you know, to make it even better into the future, um, as we continue to produce in that well.
A quick interruption, Dan, on that point. Is that kind of system-wide improvements or is that spot?
That would be, you know, particular improvements that we're proposing for well fifteen, it's a individual site that's being treated, but it's our second-largest producer, and so it really does have reverberations through the entire city.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we're looking at making sure that our systems, our, our systems are redundant. We have, uh, backup options, we have, um, you know, multiple pumps, you know, to be able to, in case one pump goes down. We have, you know, uh, we want to make sure, as you might recall, we did work along Israel Road here, um, last year to improve the, the water lines in there, and that was really installing, um, uh, basically a hardened backbone, we'll call it, for in case there's an earthquake. We're making sure some of the facilities have that resiliency to them and so we can continue to try and provide service in the time of a, of a major emergency like that. Um, as part of the, uh, the, uh, as our, as our requirements for the Department of Health, and we've got to meet future demands, we have to be looking into the future, how is our system growing, what's our population going to look like, what kind of businesses, you know, do we anticipate? And that's where it really kind of comes hand in hand with the work that y'all are doing around zoning, what does the future populations look like? That's how we determine, you know, what are, how we're going to help, you know, meet those future demands from utility perspective. Um, funds from, from the, from the water revenues can be, um, limitedly applied to buildings and facilities as long as those are supportive of, of the Utility Operations Administration. Uh, you know, kind of like the general fund, you know, even though utilities are always looked at as a, as a source of revenue, we have very limited ways we can collect money. Um, that's through rates for our services and operations that we do, and for connection fees for new connections to our, our system for, for new customers. Um, and if we're lucky, we get some state and federal grants. Uh, we're, we're more so lucky on our stormwater side to see a lot more of that available to us than we do generally on the water system side, um, and the sanitary sewer side. Um, then, of course, loans, bonds, and debt, other kinds of debt that we can acquire. Um, the city has been in a fortunate position, I think, since for probably the last ten years, we haven't had any loans or any debt for our utilities, uh, as we pay those off. Situations are changing, we have a lot, we have some very expensive projects in front of us, and so we're going to be looking at acquiring some debt, um, which is not a bad thing. You know, having a little bit of debt, it helps you stretch your system and the funds that you've got, the capacity of your system to be able to do bigger projects and extend those costs out, um, especially when it's growth paying for growth. You're looking at making sure that future customers are helping pay for that versus I always, I get a kick out of donations. We don't seem to see too many of those coming through, but I'd always be accepting, you know, any kind of checks that anybody wants to write for donations to our utility. Um, so, as you can see here, we've got fourteen projects on the water side, only two of them are new, so that means the, the remaining twelve we had seen before. Um, some of the ones that we removed, uh, we removed the new source development planning because that was completed mostly. We had a very, we had a significant number of projects that were identified in there. Um, however, as we got through the first phase of that new source development project, uh, we did some financial modeling, we determined that there's really only a couple of options, you know, for the city to move forward, um, with, and so we revised our, our forecast, looking at the existing projects that we had out there, and we determined that, you know, new source development planning, looking at, um, things like the southeast well field or the northwest well field, where we don't currently have water rights available to us or we had to apply for those, that was a much larger, much, um, much more expensive and, um, not likely to result in what we wanted, um, in a timely manner, um, or a cost-effective manner. Um, so we decided the best, one of the best things that we could do through that, um, through our new source development, so to speak, is water conservation. For that analysis, we're looking at, uh, an aggressive water conservation campaign over the next, you know, ten years, twenty years. Um, and, you know, per the forecast, we could, you know, likely get twenty percent more water just by saving it into our conservation projects. And so, um, starting tomorrow, actually Thursday, we're bringing on a new water resource specialist, and it'll be focused, dedicated on water conservation, it's the first time we're bringing on a specialist to focus on a specific program, um, and really kind of taking aggressive stance on it for, for our own operations, or, um, you know, for our commercial operations and, and as well as the residents. And so what can we do to make the use of our water much more efficient? Now, we also, um, removed the water conservation or the resource conservation sustainability, this was a kind of a placeholder fund for us, you know, if we identified any kinds of projects that would help us provide more efficient operation. Um, one of the largest, um, um, energy uses in the city is pumping water all around it. And so, uh, we went through a project, I think, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, where we did an investment-grade audit, uh, with, uh, in association with, I would say, Department of Energize Services or Enterprise Services. Um, and really, they evaluated our entire system, and they said, you guys are operating as efficiently as you possibly can. And so that was good news for us, you know, and kind of sad at the same time because we were really hoping we might be able to see some, some, some projects that would be, reduce our energy use by half. Nope, we're doing as good as we can on that, so we've removed that, um, fund out of here to make room for other projects moving forward. Um, we're leaving the water right acquisition project on here, um, as number one, as kind of just a source for funds in case something pops up, but the reality is, there's only a handful of water rights that might be available to us as, as existing water rights. Um, as you, you're probably aware, we acquired the Alasee's portion of the brewery well field last year, um, and that was a significant gain for the city, um, as City of Lacy is looking at other ways to develop their sources of supply because an eleven-mile pipeline, about energy costs of getting water to them, you know, was really, um, cost prohibitive, and they found other options, you know, to be able to look at. Similar as, as we were looking at water conservations, they found other options that worked for them. So they sold us that piece. There's really only about one other water right that's out there right now that's viable for us, and so, you know, we've already, we've already been in conversation with those property owners and, and we're hoping to, you know, ideally by the end of the year, but, you know, if not the end of the year, first part of next year. And after that, water right acquisition is going to be a, a scarce option for us, um, and new water rights is even scarcer. So, yeah, water conservation looks to the future for that. So, kind of the, the point of, um, a lot of the projects that we have on here, too, is looking at, you know, putting investments into the existing infrastructure or the existing water rights that we have. Brewery well field is a major component for us, you know, hopefully, we're going to go out with a request for bids, um, by the end of the year for drilling new wells down in the, um, Tumwater Valley Golf Course area, where the old brewery wells used to be, so we're going to put new infrastructure, new wells, eventually build new treatment, um, on properties that the city owns off of Cleveland Avenue. Um, so reinvigorating that old water, um, and getting that back out into our system would be a real nice benefit to the system and, as well as kind of, you know, get some water, you know, really putting that back into use for us. Um, let's see, what else I got in here? Well, we'll talk about some of the new projects. Um, you know, our number-one producer in the city is the Bushwell Field, and that's over by Bush Middle School off of, off of, um, Ninety-third or Eighty-third. And, um, you know, we do have some monitoring wells out there, but they, they're more superficial, and so they're looking at the shallow aquifers, which is helping protect production wells from any kind of surface, um, contamination that we might be able to see. So our monitoring wells are kind of an early detection network. So, you know, um, what we want to do is there's two levels of aquifer there, we wanted to go down to the deeper aquifer just in case something starts to come in from farther away, you know? Um, it, there is a confining layer between the top and the, and the, so the, the surface aquifer and the, and the lower aquifer, there's a confining layer in there, but it is leaky, as we call it, and so it could, there could be opportunities for some pathogenic contamination, and so we want to make sure that we're going to be able to capture that from out there. So we're going to start planning with that next year and invest in the, the development of those wells in twenty-seven. Um, you can see here about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars overall. Uh, the next new project is the four fifty-four zone booster pump improvements. These are the facilities up at the end of Sea Street, and if you've ever been up there, there's a, there's a couple of small buildings and kind of nondescript little facilities up there, but that's how we pump all of the water up to the hill. And the facilities are old, and the roof needs replacement, the piping is getting a little old, there's some corrosion that's happening out there. They're still in working condition, everything is still okay, but, you know, we want to invest in facilities, make sure that they're going to continue to operate it well into the future. Um, so this is why you don't see it until, you know, starting planning into twenty-seven, um, with the actual work being done in twenty-eight for that. Um, we're fairly confident that, you know, the supplies will last even beyond that, but we want to make sure that we're getting in there ahead of dire need for rapid replacement. Um, I wanted to highlight the Public Works Facility, I know that Brandon talked to you about that as well, um, you know, it's his presentation, this is really just one aspect of it, the water utilities portion is a fourteen-million-dollar estimate, you know, right now, and that's twenty-eight percent, um, you know, of the overall project. Um, twenty-two percent would be sewer, and seventeen percent would be funded through the stormwater utilities, which is a fairly, um, um, accurate representation of the, of the intensity of use for a facility like the Public Works Facility in terms of the equipment and, and the, the, the human resource needs at that site. Um, and so, you know, I, one of the things we're, we're trying to do as well is ensure kind of we know what the, the debt capacity looks like, uh, over time, and so you can see a bottom line here that I, that in here in terms of debt service and what it looks like, or at least the term of the CFP for us, and those numbers would continue out into future years until the debt would be paid off. Sure Brandon covered it, we're looking at a twenty-year, um, bond, you know, for this work, and, uh, we'll be working with our finance crew to kind of secure that as we, as we move towards that. And right now, I have this estimated starting in twenty-seven, but the bonds would be secured in twenty-six. And then start to be repaid in twenty-seven. So as you can tell, very significant, um, cost to this project itself. We also have a, a twenty-million-dollar, um, project, the Sea Street, or not the Sea Street, I'm sorry, the Ninety-third, um, street extension for a water maze, as well as a three-million-gallon reservoir that's going on out there. Another significant project that we're likely to be needing some kind of bonds or debt for as well. Um, the third project, we'll be looking at those, um, you know, that kind of, um, you know, debt service would be looking at the, the brewery well field, which is estimated at this point about twelve million dollars, including drilling the wells next year and then the construction of the treatment facilities. We know we're going to need significantly more treatment there than we have had anywhere else in the city because of the groundwater conditions in the valley there, they're a lot heavier in manganese and other metals that we want to make sure that we're pulling out. Um, so these are, this is kind of a summary of the existing projects that we have out there and, and kind of highly relate to the overall, um, nature of what we do. Source development, brewery well fields, as I just mentioned, water right acquisition, um, looking at those piece there, water quality, um, looking at well fifteen improvements for corrosion control, you know, as well as hardening those facilities for, or, for, um, um, protection of the physical assets, um, as well as protecting the, the pumps and the equipment that, that exists in those buildings. Um, seismic resilience, we want to do some planning efforts to, to determine where is the most appropriate place for a backbone, um, going from our production facilities to places like schools and gathering places, City Hall, um, you know, places where we want to make sure that that water continues to be able to flow to, um, health facilities, um, et cetera. So that planning process would be followed by the actual infrastructure improvements down the road. Uh, programs and planning, as I mentioned, water conservation, you know, basically, we're, over the next, um, two years, we need to update our water conservation plan, update the goals, um, for water conservation. Um, we've had the same goals in place, I want to say, for probably, you know, ten or twelve years now. Um, you know, and we really, if we're looking at achieving that twenty percent savings of our current supply, that means we're really going to have to kind of look at some aggressive programs, um, you know, reducing the amount of irrigation space. I know Brad and his team have been looking at ways that, you know, we can decrease the amount of irrigation, um, requirements, so to speak, with across the city, um, for that green space, you know, so looking at homeowner associations, do they, you know, do they really need to have all that green space and that irrigatable land? Are there better landscaping options that might be, we might want to consider as we look towards an arid fut, you know, drier future, um, you know, during summertime? The reality is, in Washington, in Western Washington, yeah, it rains, but when we use the water the most, it's not raining, you know? And so we need to make sure that that water is getting into the ground and actually staying there for when we need it, and then we're using it for the right, the right reasons. You know, unless you're playing on a ball field, you know, watering, you know, dumping thousands of gallons on a, on a patch of grass is not necessarily the wisest use of good, clean, potable drinking water for it. So, um, looking at that kind of stuff. Um, water main extension and, and replacement, oops, that's, that's critical as we're getting to a place of aging infrastructure. I'm sure you've heard about that before, you've heard me talking about it, you know, we have, we have pipes in the ground that are close to a hundred years old in some places, you know, we want to make sure that we're replacing those pipes on a systematic basis before they fail. We're seeing more and more failures on our hill because that's some of the oldest infrastructure, you know, in the city. Um, so it's something as simple as a, as a heavy truck driving, you know, over those facilities are now, you know, we're seeing some of those impacts happen on some pipes. Um, that goes hand in hand with asset management program, um, you know, which is, is vital to us to make sure that we're doing those replacements when we need them, and they're timing that right, and we're replacing the materials, um, as needed. And then we have, um, we're lucky enough to also be starting on Thursday as a new deputy director, and he's the former Capital Projects Manager for a lot, and so he's got a lot of really good experience doing asset management, doing very complex, expensive projects, and so I'm really excited to have him come on board and help me with all of these projects and kind of put some of these programs together that we just haven't had the capacity, staff capacity to do in a real way. Um, and so, um, you know, we've been doing the best we can, and we're building that capacity internally to do that stuff even better now, so. Meeting future needs, I mentioned we have the southeast reservoir, the system extension along Ninety-third Avenue, um, that is a significant project, not only for meeting future needs, but also providing that resiliency and that redundancy within our system if something were to happen. And we'll have now a three-million-gallon reservoir on the other side of town. By spatially distributing our wells and our reservoirs, we provide some, you know, protection for our community, not all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak, in one location in town. We're spreading those, uh, facilities around town to be able to help us meet those, meet those needs for the future, as well as, um, provide some resiliency in case of an, an emergency.
Quick question on that. Um, Ninety-third is the line at the end of the city, correct? So, what's the, what's the relationship, working relationship with the county in that type of emergency? So we, we have this wonderful reservoir and, and we need it because there's been a seismic event. Would folks living out in the county be able to benefit from that? How does that all work?
Um, I think it, it really depends on the emergency, you know? Um, I would say, you know, if anybody needs water, we're going to try and help anybody we can. Um, uh, you know, but like, would, would we have pipes going to their homes or their facilities outside of the city limits? No. Um, but if they came to the reservoir, they needed some water, you know, of course, we're going to try and help provide that. I know we've done work with the fire department to develop, um, and some kind of emergency faucet systems, you know, that they can kind of plug up to, you know, whether it's a truck coming from like, say, uh, the military, you know, providing water, water service in that sense, or a tanker truck from the fire department, hooking these things up to provide potable services for folks to be able to come and access. So yes, in that sense, yes, that would be available to them. Uh, and that's really about that there. Any questions on water? Any more questions?
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
You've got a really ambitious program for three years. Do you have the staff to manage it?
We are building that staff. When we brought, we're bringing on four new staff, um, on Thursday, one being the deputy director, who's going to, who was the former Capital Projects Manager, has a lot of experience of asset management, a lot of experience of capital programs. has a lot of experience of asset management, a lot of experience of capital programs. He's going to be helping us take those project, programs forward. Um, I have, um, uh, I've, I've probably in the last three years brought on almost doubled the size of our department on the administrative side. Does building that capacity be able to do that? Prior to that, yes, you're right, ambitious program, but these are all identified needs, but we really just piecemeal that we did what we could, um, with the support that we could get, you know, because even you could hire a hundred consultants, you still need people to manage consultants, manage those projects, you know? And so, um, doing, doing that, building that capacity with our department, you know, I really give, um, credit to the city council who supported this growth that we've had over the last few years, you know, for our department. It's not only administratively to handle the projects and the programs and the planning pieces, but also on the, on the operations side, we've brought in a handful of new folks. Um, I think the biggest growth, which is on our sewer crew this year, um, that really needed, because they were doing a god, good job keeping up with, you know, the inspection pieces, but then they were starting to identify more and more things that needed to get fixed. We didn't have the capacity to, to manage some of those repairs that were needed. We brought on a handful of new folks this year to be able to help with that piece too. So we're trying to fill in those gaps as best we can. And I, I'd say we're not done building that capacity. We need to continue to look through the future. The system has grown, we have a lot of needs, you know, within the system, and so how best are we meeting those needs? That's basically what I'm looking at, you know, for the next probably five years.
Dan, I have a, a question about, um, future pressures, demand for particularly potable water, um, but I guess all the systems too. And that is, um, you know, in the future, do, are we seeing, you know, like increasing or anticipate increasing use from things like data centers or things that are wat- you know, water intensive, I guess?
Absolutely. And so, I mean, part of our planning process, when we do our water comp plan, the last one we adopted, it was in twenty-one, I think, the last adoption we did. And so we're on a ten-year cycle, so we'll start that planning process again in probably a three or four years, just so we can meet the twenty thirty-one horizon. Um, and we, when we do that, we go through that process, we, part of our planning criteria is we say, let's take the largest system, you know, largest source out of supply, where are we at? You know, what kind of redundancy have we built into the system? What are the demands on the system? And we look at, what, what if we were to build out, what's the maximum demand that we could incur? And we also say, okay, future being unknown, you know, are we planning for large users? And so, you know, every time we've done this so far, we've planned for at least a two, like a million gallon a day users, which is pretty significant. Data centers can use even more than that, all right? And I was, I was approached recently, I want to say maybe last year, late last year sometime, um, where there was an interest in, in extending a water line out to a potential property that would utilize that. And we just know, flat out, we can't meet that demand. Even, even if we were to like gangbusters develop our, our sources of supply, we just can't meet the demand that they were asking for. Um, and so we have to have some reality on what our future looks like in terms of the amount of water we have. Um, you know, and it, we're getting to a place where, you know, and I've, I've been pretty open with this with our, with our council as well, is, is we need to really push on these projects for the redundancy, the brewery well field project, we want to get that done. We want to acquire some of these other water rights, you know, that we have out there. We acquired the golf course water rights, we want to put those into, into effect, right? We want to make sure that we can, we're building the sources of supply to try and ideally get in front of those types of large users that might come on. Um, one of the things we, we do is kind of to help with that is we do water availability analysis every year. And so one of the, one of the folks in my team, their, their, their job is, is looking at how much water do we have certificated on water rights, right? We can't exceed the number of, number of gallons per day that we can provide in that, in that capacity. And so we have a, we have an ongoing chart that we're tracking that, you know, every time a new development comes in, they have to request a certificate from us. We give them a, a approval if we can, and that's tied, that's tied to their project. So they can't just come in and ask for like a million gallons and then we give it to them and then they sit on that for twelve years. It has to be tied to their actual development process. And so if they don't use that within six months, we pull it back. So we're, we're updating those numbers, um, right now, but, but, um, you know, it's, it goes quick. When you have, you know, these large subdivisions coming on, you have large commercial users potentially coming on, um, it's really important that, you know, um, we're tracking that closely and, and making sure that the goal would be to give council and, and commissions, you know, plenty of advance notice of where we're at. Um, once we bring on the, the next conservation staff person, part of the conversation next year with, with city council is what, where are we at with water availability? Um, you know, especially given some of the, the pressures that are looming, um, you know, out there for us too.
Um, Dan or Brad, is that the kind of thing that will come before the planning commission when you, when you get?
I mean, I'm happy to come back and, and.
But it's not a, we're not a decision point in, yeah, okay. Okay. Got it, okay.
And, and that's more of a where are we at? It's not really even a decision process for the, for the, for the council because it's, we have the water rights that we've received from the, from, um, the state and our job is try and use, do these projects so that way we can put that water to full use. And then that gives us kind of a ceiling of where we're at and then what are our options moving forward? Um, and so we, last year we, we finished a study to do that kind of a source assessment, where, where's the next source of water for us? And water rights is, I mean, we live in a closed basin, the Deshues River and the, and the aquifers that are tied to it are closed during the summer. So the time again that we need it the most, we're, we're not allowed to pull it out of the ground. If we do have to pull it out of the ground, we have to mitigate it, you know, mitigate the impact that we're seeing there either to in-stream flows, um, for the, for the natural conditions, or to any other wells that might be in the area that we could potentially be affecting by our withdrawals. Um, you know, and so we go through a modeling process to determine what those impacts are and the mitigation of those water rights is, is significant. As an example, we, we canceled the southeast, southeast well field project that we've had on the books for a long time. We put in for the maximum amount of water, new water rights from, from the state to get even half of that, we would almost, I want to say, don't quote me on the numbers, but I want to say it was something like, we'd have to give up thirty percent of our existing water rights just to mitigate, to get less than what we currently have, right? So there was really no kind of match for us on that. We said, okay, well, that doesn't make sense to us, you know, we're not going to give up and, and put into trust existing water rights that we can put into use just to get less than that from a new well field, a new source. Um, so we said, that's not the best option for, um, you know, for us. There's no way we could mitigate that under, under current conditions, you know, um, you know, unless the rules change and we don't have to mitigate it as, as much, but, you know, as an environmental advocate as well, I'm not going to suggest that, that's hate, let's, you know, impact, you know, surrounding supplies, you know, for, for that. Um, but we looked at other options. I mean, we went all the way to desalinization and like, you know, where, you know, we get this new water from. And so we're looking at reclaimed water, expanding reclaimed water as a potential resource, which we're using already at the golf course for irrigation, which allows us to buy the golf course's water rights. So now we have water rights, they're seasonally, um, uh, they're limited, so we can really only use those water rights during the summer season, which is okay, that's when we need it, that's we need that peaking demand, you know, for our system. So we're looking at all those options, conservation being, you know, we can expand our supplies twenty percent, and that's kind of our next biggest push. Um, and then expansion of reclaimed water is a top two options, really viable options for us. Um, other ones we looked at, we're putting a dam on the Deshues River so we could create a, a, a surface water reservoir. Um, you know, that's, that's fraught with its own challenges, you know, from environmental permitting and, and just landscape perspective, all right? Um, like I said, desalinization, you know, was something we looked at. And there was a couple of other pieces, you know, in there too, that were even a little bit farther out, you know, kind of a thing, but we wanted to look at everything. We wanted to put every option on the table and say, okay, what does it look like for us, you know, into the future? Um, so I'm really, I'm really confident and hopeful we're going to see some good water conservation programs coming out. We're going to have a, hopefully a receptive community to that. Um, we are working currently on a reclaimed water, a class A plus reclaimed water pilot project with Lot, um, and, and our, and the regional stakeholders, Department of Health, Ecology, so the regulators that are involved with regulating what drinking water and, and clean water looks like, um, as well as Lacey, Olympia, um, and to a lesser degree Thurston County, because they don't really have drinking water utilities. But wanted to say, okay, if we were to use water in the future, what, what's the treatment that would be required to utilize that? You know, and we're talking twenty, thirty, forty, you know, fifty years down the road, you know, which, we just want to start that conversation today though, can this be done? We know it's done in other communities around the world, around the country, um, you know, successfully, and so what does that mean for our local region though as well? So hopefully, you know, in the next year or so, you know, you'll, you'll all join us down in a celebration at the Craft District to say, you know, let's drink some reclaimed water and make some food with it, or something along those lines. So we're kind of kicking that project off here shortly as well. Looking forward to that. So all options are on the table for us.
Great, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Is Olympia going to be drilling new well same time you are?
Oh, for the, for the brewery well field?
Brewery well field.
No, no. We're, we're definitely moving ahead. Um, I, they're banking there. There, we are, we're working in, in concert in that sense. So we have a, I want to say a twenty-year extension from the Department of Ecology to put those water rights to full beneficial use. Meaning we have to have all the pipes in the ground, we have all the wells in the ground, and we have to be pumping that full source of supply to, to perfect those water rights. Right now they're in certificate or they're in permit form. Once we can perfect it, then it'll be a permit, right, um, or a certificate for us. Um, and so we are working with Olympia. They're not pursuing development of their water right increment currently, but if we're able to produce that water out of the ground to demonstrate perfection of those water rights, then we're going to work with them to do that. But it's likely there'll probably be, you know, ten, twenty years down the road before they're looking at actually building the facilities, you know, and we're putting those wells in. The conversation that precedes that though is, you know, something that I hope to pick up with Olympia staff next year, is kind of putting that, um, that, um, in our local agreement in place. How are we operating the facility? What does it look like? Who's owning it? You know, what's the relationship between Olympia and Tumwater in terms of operating the facility, um, and providing water into the future, you know, when the time comes? You know, maybe it's a Tumwater facility, you know, it, it seems weird to have, you know, two separate facilities, you know, next to each other, one that Olympia operates and one that we operate. So those are the details that we're going to be working out probably over the next year or two, um, with Olympia. And I know, it had been a great partner to work with since, um, since this whole conversation started, um, and so I anticipate that being a fairly, um, easy path. I mean, here we are twelve years later after acquiring the water rights, so, yep.
I want to check in on those commissioners online. Did, did anybody have a question or a comment for Dan?
No, this is great information, thank you.
Yes, thank you, no questions from me, thank you.
No questions here either.
Thanks y'all, all right.
All right, I'll jump into sanitary sewer, a little less complicated. You know, we pump water out of the ground, we serve drinking water, they go down the, uh, drains, down the toilets, down the showers, and we just convey it to Lot. Luckily, we don't have to pay for the treatment, um, we collect funds for the Lot Treatment Center, we pass those monies over to Lot so they can treat it. Our primary job here is to make sure it continues and it gets down there in the pipe, all the way down to Lot, um, and treat it down there. Um, that doesn't mean, uh, we don't have to consider the similar things, infrastructure replacement, um, expansion in areas where, um, you know, we might have a, a high, um, concentration of, of urban density septic systems. So you might recall the conversation from about ten years ago, um, where the jurisdictions, all three of the jurisdictions of Lot got together and said, hey, we have a challenge with, with septic systems that has urban density and the potential for groundwater, um, uh, impacts. And what do we do there? Well, part of that, part of that conversation was, um, expanding, um, utility services into neighborhoods where those exist, um, and what are the programs that look like for, you know, conversions? What are the policies around those programs? We've had, um, some early successes with some early, um, uh, converters, so to speak, but they're generally one-offs. We're not seeing stuff really on the neighborhood scale, um, which we would like to see, um, particularly, um, the challenge where we see with the one-offs is that, you know, if you have somebody at the end of the street and, you know, there's, there's, there's a failing, but the rest of the neighborhood before, you know, where they had to drag a line, you know, past their homes, aren't in a situation where they need to replace, um, it becomes, it's just a constant resetting of the existing, um, uh, septic systems out there. And what we really want to try and is facilitate a conversion of an entire neighborhood. Uh, we do have, we did receive a grant, um, last year, um, to do some of that work with the Velcom and Mobile Home Park, and, you know, they've been willing participants, um, and it gets, these volumes to the type of work they're trying to do out there, um, but they were one of the high, um, high ranking sites for potential, um, contamination, groundwater contamination because of the concentration of, of sites on their, on their, on their property. Um, and so we are wrapping that project, I want to say by the end of next month, that project will be complete, will be thirty-nine septic units, um, now on public sewer, um, heading down to Lot for treatment and getting out of the groundwater. So that's the infrastructure expansion and conversion programs we'd like to see. Again, another spot where, um, you know, our, our deputy director, um, will be instrumental in, in, in getting that off the ground, um, which requires a lot of planning around that, a lot of work, you know, probably with planning commission as well as, as with, um, our, our city council, make sure that the policies that get in place for that, um, make the most sense. Um, we're going through a process right now with our, our, um, comp plans and we're similar to what we do with the water system. Um, the last sanitary sewer wastewater comp plan update was twenty fifteen, so we are at the ten-year mark, it's probably going to be a year or two before we complete that study. We, you know, we were just wrapping up scope and work negotiations with a consultant to do that, um, right now, so it's good timing for us. Um, so that way we can then look into the future, look at, you know, build out conditions and what do we need to make sure that our, our system is operating, um, wholly and successfully. Same, same funding conversation, we have rates, we have connection fees, grants and, and loans and bonds to help secure some debt. Um, and we will be looking at some debt projects, debt-funded projects for this, um, primarily the, um, public works facility, you know, for the sewer, sewer utility as well. Um, fifteen projects here, uh, cost about twenty-eight million dollars, did I see that correctly? About twenty-eight million dollars. We only have, again, really two new projects and, and one of them's not even new. Um, but I wanted to highlight the sewer extension project for you, um, uh, which is, was on the books previously as placeholders, you know, as we develop, as we identify projects that, um, you know, makes sense for us to extend sewer, whether it's through development and helping support development, uh, to make sure that the, the facilities are built in city standards. Um, but we were, we were fortunate enough to get, um, a, a very low interest loan from the Department of Ecology to extend sewer mains down, um, past, um, the, the Beehive Industrial Neighborhood and through the industrial neighborhood there, which again is, is, um, there's high groundwater conditions, there are septic tanks, they're not even septic fields, um, there, um, for those properties around there, and so it's, it's, it's of high interest for us to get a lot of those properties, those, those commercial properties converted over, um, you know, and so that was of, of interest for the ecology as well. And so they provided us a low interest loan, um, to begin that planning, that work. And that is, uh, some initial planning work will start next year with ideally construction, um, starting in twenty-seven and then ending up in twenty-eight. And so, um, really the goal there is to get as mu- get as far down Trosper as we can, you know, and so we're going to see what project, um, costs will allow us to do as we start to get into the planning phases for that. Um, but this definitely brings in the Beehive, the Beehive Industrial Neighborhood and moves it, moves it farther south, which, um, has been a very difficult proposition for the city because the development conditions out there are challenging in terms of new construction and extending those sewer mains out there. So this was, this was a blessing for us to be able to move that stuff forward, literally. Um, and then the other new project on there is really just a, it's a minor evaluation of the, of the Hickson Siphon. The Hickson Siphon is kind of the, the last stopping point before wastewater conveys over to Lot, basically through the Deshues Valley. Um, it's, it's a, it's an interesting, complex system, um, you know, that we want to make sure, um, is, is continues to work correctly and, um, protects the, the neighborhood. There's been some concerns with, um, you know, how well the, the, the odors are being maintained. Um, it's basically like a big compost, um, facility out there right now, um, that is, that the compost acts as basically an odor, um, an odor eater, if you will. And so we make sure that the neighborhood isn't inundated with, um, um, negative odors. And so we're going to do some evalu- evaluated work out there, so more of just kind of an assessment piece. Um, some of the stuff that we've got ongoing and that continues to be on this list, the sewer extension program, as I mentioned, the annual sewer infrastructure replacement program, that's basically the asset management piece, um, that we really want to kick off from ground, just like with water, we want to do the same thing, we build in that capacity to be able to do that. We have the comp plan update that's in progress, um, the ERP, which affects all utilities We have the comp plan update that's in progress, the ERP, which affects all utilities and the citywide process there. And that's the, it's the conversion of our financial software, you know, our communication software, making sure that our permitting systems, all that kind of stuff is all in, in one particular place. The ONM facility here as well and a couple of save, kind of placeholders. We have a regional pump station placeholder. This is again, it's a development. You know, should something, say a development be proposed in an area where a pump station is needed, but it's a smaller development and they don't have the million, the million dollars to be able to support the development of a, of a pump station in there. And that's where the city could then step in, you know, and, and make sure that we have some funds available to make sure that the wastewater needs are actually being conveyed in a way that, that works for our system. Similar to an oversizing program, which we also have with, with the water system. Oversizing is basically if a development goes in and they need a four inch main, but we call out for a 12 inch main, we would pay for the additional cost increase from the four inch to the 12 inch. And, you know, kind of the, we talked about aging infrastructure, the last component of what we've got with sanitary sewers is infrastructure maintenance. We have a couple of projects, Streamland Estates, the Kimmy Street List Station, the Lloyd Street List Station. These all need to be improved, to get up to, you know, there's some deficiencies, there's mechanical issues, there's some challenges there. We want to make sure that those systems continue to operate because the last thing anybody wants is, is a failed list station. And as part of our comp plan, oh, whoa, whoa, hey, back there. As part of our comp plan, the I-5 sanitary sewer main crossing report. The consultant that we've hired to do that is going to also provide us an analysis of the sewer mains that are crossing underneath I-5. It's particularly challenging to evaluate those systems because you can't just, you know, shut down I-5 and, and, you know, kind of drop, you know, pop open the manhole lid, take a look, you know, what's down there, what's going on. So they've got some experience doing some of that work up north underneath I-5. And so they're going to, they're going to assist us in doing that. And that's really just an evaluation thing. If there's anything that we knew needed to be done to protect the integrity of that, of that system. That's really it for sanitary sewer. It's a little bit simpler of a, of a utility, but this is important. Any questions?
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
The city just last week approved a development on Henderson. And I noticed that part of the notes on the development is that the city's going to bring sewer out there. So which one of these objects does that fit under? They said it's going to be finished next year.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a kind of our extension program. You know, if we have some funds there to support that. But ultimately, the development is paying for that and they're paying for that for latecomers and things like that. You know, and so that's where, you know, the private developer extends those mains, you know, to their development. Then anybody who comes in and connects to that main, you know, if the city does the work, you know, those, it becomes a special assessment fee and those never expire. And so it doesn't matter if it takes 45 years for somebody to connect to that line. That fee we get, you know, the city would recover those funds 45 years down the road. Private development only has 20 years to recover funds. And so, you know, for a private developer, part of that, part of that calculation becomes is like, is there enough development pressure in that, within the vicinity to recover those costs? You know, and that's where the city can then also participate and help because the city can recover those costs at any point down there.
Oh, it may not be the city, it maybe is the developer.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that because nobody's asked me for any money. So I, I think that's where it's really kind of developer that, yeah, the private developer would be extending that and it'll be part of the condition. So the, the part of, part of that project is they build it and they dedicate it to the city.
Right now, Henderson is two lanes with a drainage ditch on each side, no shoulder. And the city's plans is that they're going to have sidewalks on both sides in the future and possibly three lanes on Henderson. I'm just wondering how the sewer fits into that. There's just not that much right away.
It could go under Henderson. It could be, it could be in the middle of the street and underneath the street. You know, so that we have standards that the developer would have to meet and it fits all types of right away distances and things like that. As long as it's below our drinking water mains.
Get it below clean water. Any other questions on that? All right.
All right. Jumping into stormwater. This is slightly different because we start to, we start to cross over to more environmental issues around stormwater because stormwater affects our surface waters, surface water affects salmon, you know, which is an endangered species. And so there's a, there's a little bit more crossover on the environmental side with the storm drain fund. And also, and if you think about how flood mitigation, water quality and habitat conservation can all really help mitigate flood issues, water quality issues and those things. And so there is a little bit of, of different expenditure of funds for the stormwater fund. But it also primarily is looking at infrastructure replacement and expansion where those, where those facilities are needed. Like many of the other, like the other two utilities, they're generally developer driven when the stormwater main is extended. Stormwater pond and facilities, you know, tend to be built on private property to serve those private properties and at the expense of, of that development. We're always looking at water quality and quantity improvements. We want to make sure that, you know, as water is discharging into our surface waters, because all water runs downhill. The Schuze River is the primary kind of receptacle for all of our stormwater or our groundwater. We want to make sure that we've got the, the best water quality, you know, measures in, in advance of that discharge, whether it's to ground or it's to surface water. And then quantity protections, you know, we have to slow it down. It used to be let the water get it out of there as fast as you can. Now we realize that that did its own damage, you know, many moons ago. And so we're looking at making sure that we're slowing that water down now too, to protect the in-stream resources like fish, for fish needs. And that goes right along with habitat protection and restoration. You might recall the city had just acquired properties in the Schuze Valley from the lot, the Clean Water Alliance. It no longer needs those down there. Part of that from, from the stormwater's perspective is looking at doing some riparian restoration just adjacent to East Street where those properties, but the Schuze River. Urban forestry is kind of a new component for us, but it's canopy cover, the amount of trees that we have in the city directly relates to improved water quality, water retention, all things that are equally important to our drinking water programs, you know, as well as stormwater and protection of water quality and in-stream resources too. So that's, that's a brand new program really for us. It's implementing the urban forestry management plan that the city has adopted a number of years back. We just hired our first urban forester four months ago, I want to say. He's fantastic. And it's been great to see, you know, the city really take this, that element on. We do the same kind of planning in our, in the stormwater utilities we do in the water and, and sewer utilities. So I think our last comp plan was, was done in 2018. And so once we get done with our sewer, we're going to be looking at our storm and then we'll go back to our water. So it's just, you know, wash, rinse, repeat. Funding sources are the same with the exception of connection fees. We do not have connection fees. Connection fees in the other two utilities are, help, help offset new development projects, cities' development projects. You know, so new, new wastewater facilities, new wells that go in, those connection fees help offset the cost in theirs. We don't have something similar in, in stormwater predominantly because, you know, the large city facilities tend not to be as, as, there's not as many of those because most of that stormwater is managed on site, you know, with our new development. Unintentionally that way. Smallest utility but has the largest number of projects at 21. A lot of smaller projects, you know, that we have here, but they add up. The largest, obviously from a dollar perspective facility that we have is the public works facility here again. That's 17%, that's an $8 million project for, for, for the stormwater utility. The other two major projects that we have on here are the Percival Creek Fish Barrier Removal Project. It's basically a culvert replacement project. And the new project we've added, number 21, is the Somerset Hill Culvert Replacement Project. Luckily for us, both of those projects are almost 100% funded by federal programs through the State Department of Transportation, recognizing the need that, you know, these fish passage improvement projects are critical from an endangered species standpoint and, and the work that we've been doing, you know, for many years to replace those facilities. The Somerset Hill is our, is our most current addition. Ideally, we're going to go to construction next year. We, we have a contractor under bid for, for the Percival Creek one on Sap Road. And this one will be doing just one road over. And when these two projects are done, it opens up the headwaters of Trosper to Salmon for the first time since those roads constricted that. And so it's, it's a pretty monumental moment and I'm, I'm really looking forward to getting both of these projects done. You know, of what's, like I said, we are very fortunate enough to get almost 100% funding from the feds to do this work.
I hope there's a, a public celebration, announcement, celebration for opening up those headwaters.
Oh, yes, there, there definitely will be. If I have anything to do with it. One of the things we want to do next year as construction is going, we want to have like some aerial observ, observant point, observation points, you know, so that you could actually see the construction of the, of the work that they're doing out there. Because I'm sure you've all been down past, you know, you know, Percival Creek on Sap Road there where there's no sidewalks. It's so constrained, you can barely get two cars passing each other there, let alone somebody trying to walk or bike alongside there. You know, so they're going to be expanding that facility to allow for, I think there's a sidewalk at least on one side. And, you know, there's other facilities, we're expanding the, the footprint of the road there. Water quality features are going in to protect for the expanded imperious surface. And it'll be a, a straight flow through for a, like kind of a, it'll be a box culvert that goes in that allows for, for that flow. And so that's a pretty complex project. And so it'd be kind of cool to watch it in like three minutes, you know, go through the, the course of its construction. We'll do the same thing with Somerset Hill. And then yes, we'll have a big celebration once that's all done to acknowledge the reality that we now have this, these headwaters of Trosper. I talked to some old timers around here and they're like, oh yeah, I remember fish used to come all the way up here and they haven't seen them in many years. And, and so we're excited to bring those fish, fish back in. Speaking of fish, you know, those are some of the projects that we have out there that are existing, the Tomwater Valley Regional Facility, the Schuze Habitat Restoration Projects, Outfall Retrofits. You know, a lot of the stuff we do for water quality, which serves habitat, which serves fish. And by fish, salmon, the salmon species out there that, you know, if you go down to, you know, Brewery, Brewery Park now, you know, it is fantastic to see the, the salmon that are swimming in the newly renovated facilities down there. We also have a culvert replacement project out on 66th, kind of on the other side of the watershed, continuing some work that Thurston County had done to move it back. We have flooding mitigation is another big bucket of, of work. These are identified around Pride Stormwater Pond, Kurt's Sap Road and Kurt's Sap and 54th, dealing with some of the flooding. She's out there, they're minor flooding, but something we still want to be able to address into the future. Infrastructure maintenance, looking at just basically kind of asset management stuff there as well. We have a process, a project right now at Beehive Industrial where there is no stormwater management out there. And so we are looking to, you know, make sure we're changing that, providing some water quality, slowing some of those water flows down. So, you know, it's not creating this erosive, you know, it's eroding out every time that, that water comes down off of the hill from the residential neighborhood above it. And then of course, our planning projects, as I mentioned before. As I noted earlier too, Tomwater Hill is some of our oldest infrastructure. We want to go through a process where we're actually, you know, systematically doing an assessment on Tomwater Hill. We've had a number of sinkholes open up up there, both in public, public right away, as well as in properties where, you know, maybe a pipe was put in, you know, 75 years ago that nobody even knew existed anymore. And we're seeing some of that start, the infrastructure start to break down. So we wanted to have a comprehensive study done up there so we can identify where some of those major needs are. So that's really kind of the end of the projects and I have some, you know, just some hopefully quick slides, the three slides left. But these are a lot of stuff. These get, starting to get thick really quick, you know, on these slides. The major point is what I said earlier. You know, these are complex projects, you know, the numbers are going to change, you know, all the way up into the budget adoption next year. You know, you know, as I'm going through various modeling or various scenarios, okay, are we moving this project forward? How much do we spend in this year? Do we have any money left? You know, all that happens up until the time of budget adoption next year. You know, a good example of that is, what we can see here is I have rose rate increase of 9.3%. We adopted a budget that has me, has that down to 5.5%. I don't know if I can really, can I do the, I can do the, where's the little laser pointer? Ah, there we go. Let's do laser pointer. Can you see that? Oh my gosh, that's so small. All right. Well, we can see on here on this, on the, on the table there, you can see where it, where I have the, I have the terms reserved met. Anyway, you can see where it says reserve met and yes, yes, no, 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 yes. You know, that is one of our, kind of our, our indices where, you know, we're not below our fund balance. So if we have a zero on a fund balance, that's a bad day, right? We want to make sure that we still have money in the bank, but we have these reserve policies where we want to make sure that we have enough money in case something significant happened. We, you know, the banks froze up, how do we pay our bills? You know, and so we want to make sure that we have 20% of our, of our operation and maintenance budget on any given day, plus the ability to meet our debt, our debt service. And so that's where you see 20% ONM plus debt service. And that creates a dollar line based on, you know, what we, what we, you know, anticipate, you know, the forecast of the expenditures to be that given year. And so, you know, where you see the, the top line, ending fund balance, where it turns orange. That's just, that's just the modeled style in there that says you dropped below your reserve balance, you know, but you're not at zero. And so this becomes a, you know, a conversation, you know, to determine, okay, are we comfortable with this? Do we have, you know, can we, can we modify, you know, the, the numbers? You know, and again, this is where it starts to, you know, up to the point of a budget adoption next year, where is that forecast? This is based off of a budget forecasting full expenditure this year. I can assure you, we have not spent full expenditure, full budget this year on, on projects. And so, you know, even if it was going next year, those numbers are going to look different. So one of the points I was, I was making around, and I, there it is. So one of the, one of the things that we were talking about, you know, when I said 9.3%. Well, really we did, we committed to 5.5% you know, in the, in the, for the water utility as far as a rate increase for next year. And that includes just our standard 2% to 3% that we generally include every year to deal with inflation and rising costs in operations and insurance costs, you know, fuel costs, et cetera. That's just the standard inflation that we do every year. And so when you look at 5.5 or 6%, that's two, two and a half to 3% more that, that covers that. And your, and your question is, so I mean, when I look at that, okay, that, that five and a half to 6%, that's the difference between, if you look at 2026 there, that's the difference between $2.24 or $2.44 a month. You're talking about a 20 cent difference on a monthly utility bill for that utility. And so that's where we weigh what the number looks like in terms of the rate, the rate increase versus what the actual dollar impact is. You know, and so that's, we'll model those out and kind of take a look at that, what's that overall impact? How does that affect our customers? We have, we also include an affordability analysis, you know, with our, with our rate increases. As you can see, as would be expected, you know, when you see green, that means it's affordable. And so for, you know, most folks within, within the community, it's a very affordable utility rate. And that looking, that looks at all of our utilities except for that first line. That is the lowest, lowest income bracket. But we're looking at obviously doing for there as well is how do we increase our lifeline pro, our product programs? These are programs that'll help, you know, the most vulnerable folks within our, with, you know, customers within our utilities. And, you know, and ideally we can increase those support programs to a way that offsets this overall impact. But no matter how you reconcile the budget, how, you know, you look at rate increases, you know, the lowest, the lowest bracket, income bracket is going to be the most impacted, you know, for, for these types of projects. And so that's where we're looking at creating those balances for, for this. But you can see, you know, from an affordability metric, and we don't, we looked at it differently this past round historically. You basically look at your bill and you say 2% of that bill is, where does that equal? And that's the affordability metric. We're also including analysis of household costs. What are all the other costs of a household? So we use, we use a lot of different metrics now in terms of what affordability means and not just standard calculation that might've been sufficient, you know, 15 years ago.
And Commissioner Nelson has a question.
Well, I, I was just thinking in my personal path perhaps, but other people. What's the approval process? Is it just the, the city council that approves this budget overall, knowing that those percentages are built in? If some of the larger utility districts, for example, have to go before some type of boards to get rate increases approved. And when I, when I saw this before I came in, I thought it looks big when you say some of the bigger percentages. When you actually say the dollar amount, then it's small. And so that makes, you know, perception is.
And that's why it's, it's always important for us when we are presenting a rate increase, we look at what that dollar impact actually was.
I appreciate that.
You could have, and for instance, you know, and an example is our stormwater rates. We look at a 12% increase, you'd say, wow, it's huge. It's like 10 cents, right? Because our, our stormwater rate for a single household is, is $12, right? So 10% is maybe a dollar point, right? So it's, it's again, very small overall impact, maybe $12 for the year when you think about, you know, what, what that looks like.
And this goes to the city council as for approval.
It doesn't have to go to like a UTC or anything along those lines.
Right, thank you.
You know, but it is, it is something that our city council is very concerned about, you know, as, as well as my utility staff. We want to make sure that, you know, we're not artificially inflating these, these projects. You know, and that's where, you know, I really try up to that last day of that we're submitting those budgets, you know, that we've, we've dialed this back as much as we possibly can. We also just completed as part of that source analysis work that we did with our, with our water system plan, with our, with our, on our water utility side. And we looked at, you know, are, are connection fees appropriate? Are they, are they, are they calculated appropriately? Where are we at with that? As you can see right here, if I can do this one. Where our existing utility is at, or existing connection fee is at 5511, $5,511. It was recommended to be at $5,749. And that's really offsetting again, the cost of new development and new, new infrastructure and, and that portion that would be, you know, contributed to by new development. But we're not far off. It was a 4% increase as they recommended. And so as our, as our adopted budget gets us, we're going to be at 5787 next, next year with the already adopted budget, you know, that incorporated that project in there. So it was kind of nice validation for my team to say, oh, okay, we're right in line with where we need to be on a connection fee for new development. Where are we at with rates? That's a different story. Because of the projects that we have in front of us, you know, the, the public works facility, the Southeast Reservoir, the Brewery Well Field, all multi-million dollar projects happening seemingly at once, they were recommending a 19% increase. And I was like, there is no way we're going to get there on a 19% increase. Let me see. And we go back and see if I, if you can see that. So this was the numbers as I was playing with it the other day. This is where the 9.3% increase came in. Again, adopted by budget was a 5.5, so I'm going to dial that back to 5.5, you know, for 20, 2026. And that is where you can kind of see here, these are the two numbers that we were looking at from the financial modeling perspective and how we progress through the system. My goal is to make sure, one, we don't run out of money. For lack of, since I can't show you on my screen, I'll show you up here on, on, on the screen here. This is our rate efficiency. We want to make sure that our operation, our rates are covering our operations. As you can see, we start to run lower than that. You don't want to be above one too much because then you're basically charging too much for your rates. You don't want to be below one too much because then you're not collecting enough, right? And so you see, because those big projects are happening right here, it starts to affect our ability, our operational rates to be covered, right? Also coincide because we're not necessarily meeting our reserve policy, right? But we still have a healthy fund balance. 1 million, we're dropped down to below a million here, but we're right along that 1 million dollar line. As we get out here to 2031, we're back up over one. So there's some balance, there's some magic, so to speak, within the numbers of here and how you define those, how you find that balance within rates. That one is not making it unaffordable for our customers, but also accomplishing what we need to do and accomplish for our system when we can get there. So those are the various metrics that we're looking at to, to try and get the best we can. Oh, you can see there. So 19.5 is what they were recommending for 2027. I said, thanks for your report. It's very, it's very good. I don't know if we're going to do that. We'll figure it out. So that's, that's really kind of the utilities in a nutshell. Here we are in October already. Who knows what happened to August and September? The next step sounds, I think it's, it's almost what, next week for you, two weeks have a, have a public hearing for, for this, for this work and for the work that you're doing with Brad. And then it goes to city council for their reviews as well in November with adoption in December.
First of all, do you have additional questions for Dan? But then also to have a set the public hearing date for your next.
Great. Any questions for folks? Thank you. 3-0. Anybody want to make a motion about hearings?
So would the hearing occur on our next meeting?
Yes.
So I move that we hold a public hearing on 2025 ordinance. Okay, I have that right in front of me. What he said.
All right.
At our next meeting.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Nelson and seconded by Commissioner Kirkpatrick that we schedule a public hearing for ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero nine, on the final docket for the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan amendments for utilities. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, yes, approved, let's schedule it.
Thank you all for your time tonight. Do you have any questions, putting now and then, feel free to reach out.
Thanks for a good presentation, very thorough.
Eric, if I sign out, as you, does that kick anybody up? Okay.
Touch that dial. All right, thank you, Dan. All right, shall we move on to item number eight? This would be ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-five dash oh one zero, oh ten, our twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan periodic update. Head for... Okay, great.
Pardon me. This is for comprehensive plan update, periodic update. Data includes everything we've talked about today. Have fun, because it makes a gigantic packet.
It's a shebang.
And it's slightly less than seventeen hundred pages, right? That's the positive.
Yes.
And also it's less than a hundred and sixty. Is it as small as I would have liked three years ago? No. But we do have a new climate element. We must more robust housing element, plus a lot of other updates and changes.
Right.
Question is, so really, I'll have Dana walk you through sort of the broader thing. So I think the key question for you, the commission, to keep in mind is what additional information you needed that you haven't had already in order to move this forward?
Yep. And we're looking to schedule the hearing on this one too, right?
So our intent is to, schedule wise, is to have a briefing tonight. We have the potential for two work sessions.
Okay.
Further issues to discuss. Our intent is to have a hearing at the last meeting in November.
Okay.
If you are comfortable with a earlier hearing date for the first meeting in November, that's fine with us. But our schedule calls for us to have a joint meeting with the city council in December. That's the best time for them to...
Okay.
...to get. And so we figured we're comfortable with development, code update, and the complement of each.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Just like the numbers are changing on the budget, some of this stuff is still being written, I mean...
No, we're done. The only thing changing is the schedule. And that's actually locked now, since we've submitted everything with the...
We thought the transportation plan was nearly finished, though.
Yeah, it is done.
They have...
It is done. But Dan...
Go ahead, Dan.
All right, well, the ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero is the comprehensive plan update. So we have three ordinances moving forward, and I just want to make sure we're clear on which one we're talking about. Dan talked about zero zero nine, this is now zero zero ten, and then later we'll talk about the development code update. So this is the big enchilada, all the elements packed into one, the whole thing moving forward. So we wanted to make sure that we had another opportunity to talk about the format, but of the ordinance itself, it is laid out as a legal document so that we can be sure we're clearly addressing all the requirements of the comprehensive plan stated under GMA. So we want to make sure that it's very clear, we have a legal obligation to make sure it's clear and that, moving forward in the process, that all of those steps have been covered and are, and are explicit and transparent in the process. So we also want to review the adoption schedule, like Brad said, it has changed, and we're going to continue to review the adoption schedule every time so that everyone's on board and has an opportunity to say, you know, I really need to take a little bit of a pause here and think about this a minute, or, you know, we have seen this for the last two and a half years, or whatever in between, like those are, those are definitely extreme options, but just to give you the opportunity.
Very quick note on change for the adoption schedule. That came out of discussions with the city attorney and the concern of the state deadline being the end of this year, the gap that we create by not meeting that deadline. And that's primarily, primarily when it comes to state mandated changes to development code, which we'll talk about at the next meeting. If we don't adopt something at the end of this year, the state model code takes over for those areas. And to be really honest, I don't like the model code, it's not well-written. I don't understand it, not a good sign. So to limit our exposure and concerns with dealing with two sets of regulations start of next year, we advance this, deal with that.
Well, and just to be fair, I think when Brad says, I don't like it, the, the issue really is that it's unclear and difficult to implement.
Yes.
And so when we're thinking about putting something out there that our community can enact and, and follow, it doesn't meet the standards that we hold ourselves to. So that's, that's something we don't want for our community, so therefore, you know, making sure we can adopt this on time allows our community to have those clear standards that they're used to.
And it's an, and it's an all or none kind of a thing, right?
Yep. So the ordinance, oh, twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero, all the comprehensive plan, where I want to be really clear about what this includes. So just want to, there are pieces that it includes and pieces it doesn't include. This includes all of the elements that you have seen and that are required under GMA. So that's the climate element, which is new. We have the conservation element, the housing element, the land use element, the lands for public purposes element, the transportation element, and the utilities element. So the pieces it does not include is the economic development plan, the parks and recreation plan, both of those are expected for adoption in twenty twenty-six, but different departments are working on those pieces, and they're not required for the GMA update, okay? They're definitely require, like, very valuable to our city and speak to all these plans and work in coordination with them, and we need to move this other bit forward so we can be in compliance and all the things we just said. And then the shoreline master program, that's due in twenty thirty, so we do have a bit of time on that. I think we just updated our shoreline master program a few years ago, so we have some time before we're due to update that. And then the other piece that we worked on and more of a, as a, as a, hopefully a courtesy to the community, to be transparent and to draw all the lines together, was the plan introduction. So that is not required, but something that we heard from you, that you wanted the thread that goes between them and to, to tell the story. And we're going to tell a teeny bit more of that story tonight, just because we're really focused on those, those overarching plan goals. And hopefully, I can paint a picture of how those overarching plan goals really, you know, how we address GMA goals with them, and how they increase our capacity as a community and they, they instill the vision going forward. So that's my goal. All right, so the ordinance itself, the, if I could say this so clearly, the ordinance is the legal document with the findings, with the conclusions, and it lists the adoption. And then the appendices are part of the ordinance. So that thirty attachment document is the ordinance. The ordinance are part, the, the appendices are part of it. So if you can imagine, it's all one thing, it's hard to even imagine, we can't compile it in one PDF without it crashing. So I do apologize for thirty different documents, hopefully they're well labeled and easy to follow as much as possible, but yeah, that, that is the ordinance. So these pieces, the findings are really the recitals and the pieces that dictate the findings of fact. So they, they're factual statements about what, what is required in the GMA and what we did to address the GMA and the things that the GMA, or sorry, the, the things that the ordinance accomplishes. So the ordinance and all the attachments, all those accomplish. So the conclusions are the outcomes. Oh, so that's what they accomplished, there we go. So the conclusions really line that out, like, what will this give us? All right, so adoption, the adoption piece really defines specifically what is moving forward. So it, it dictates that and sets that as what we are adopting. Okay. Ordinance considerations, we basically want to make sure that these pieces are clearly laid out in the ordinance. So right now, we're talking about the first, the first two pages, the findings and the, excuse me, the findings and the conclusions. So we want to make sure that the purpose is really clear, like, why did we undertake this work? For the most part, we undertook the work because it's required in the GMA.
Thought that was funny.
Mm-hmm. Right, and without GMA, there are other things I think our community would prioritize and will work on, and we can recognize that the GMA has things that we need and that there's value there, right? I digress, moving on. So we want to be really clear about the public engagement that happened and the level of public engagement, the different types of public engagement, so at the policy, let me be clear, at the board level and at the community level, both types. So we did, in the plan introduction, include all of the community engagement opportunities as a summary, so that's included. Hopefully you've been, had a chance to review that. The review and approval criteria from our own code that says this is what we need to do, and then how the public notification on the hearings that we held and are about to hold, and that those were held, that those were done according to Open Public Meetings Act, and then staff conclusions, that our staff conclusions are clear and, and line out how we, how we answered each of the questions, or each of the requirements, and then the recommendation, that this is complete and it moves forward as the new updated comprehensive plan, no longer comprehensive plan, periodic update. All right.
So as a quick clarification, so the staff report follows this format about explaining the details of this. The key thing to understand about the review and approval criteria that are in municipal code, it's the same criteria that we use for any amendment, is just because, similar to an amendment, anytime we do a policy change or a change to the maps and so forth, that's the same criteria that we have to follow. That's spelled out in the staff report.
Great. So a quick thing, for the folks online, with PowerPoint up, I can't see if anybody has any questions, so if you do have a question, just, just go ahead and break in. Go ahead, Dan.
Give him a second.
No.
All right, so these, I'm going to go into the community, excuse me, I'm going to go into the comp, the overall comprehensive plan goals, and hopefully show you how we as staff addressed the comprehensive, the, mm-hmm, slow down and be careful, the Growth Management Act goals for a comprehensive plan. So let me just be careful here. Right, yes, they, I'm sorry, goals in the, in the Growth Management Act for a comprehensive plan. All right, so when we think about engagement, as I said, we have a summary of our engagement as appendix C of the, that's in the introduction, the plan introduction, and we regularly engage with planning commission and our city council, including the general government committee, and, and at all stages of the plan, from even before, before we even started the plan, we engaged with these bodies to make sure our work plan and our scope was adequate and that it, that it met the requirements. So from there, all the way through and with each individual element, and then also as a whole plan, so inside out, backwards and through. That we attended partner events, we hosted our own meetings, we had open houses, created online opportunities for people to engage, and we asked the questions for the public for feedback. And we developed the comprehensive plan webpage to post information, and that's been up and it continues to be up and has the most recent versions of our plans.
All of this work was guided by... We talked about the planning commission back in twenty. Pretty much everything that we just talked about, all the different avenues, all the other things, the...
Right. And those are addressed in GMA goal eleven for citizen participation, so we met, we met that goal in that, in those ways. All right, so coordination, we wanted to make sure that this wasn't done outside of any of the existing subarea plans and comprehensive plans for other divisions, like you heard Dan say, we got a comp plan here and a comp plan there, we're just going to recycle and repeat. That's because he also has a stormwater comprehensive plan, he has a water facilities comprehensive plan. So our plans talk to and coordinate with those plans, and also transportation plans. We have the Capitol Corridor Plan, we have the Little Rock Subarea Plan, that's a couple of examples of the multiple different plans, and, and they're all being used to pull together. So that level of coordination, you know, it speaks to GMA goal eleven as well, where coordination amongst our, coordination amongst our departments is key to making sure everyone hears, and then also coordination with the tribes. We notified the tribes at several different points about the updates and invited them to comment, and we had heard from Squaxton, I believe.
And Squaw.
And then Squawley, there we go. So then, GMA twelve also said that public facilities and services also need to be included in the plan, so making sure that, as we're talking about transportation, we're also including the land use, and, and those are all coordinated. All right, so community vibrancy, and to me, this is like almost the reason we do the comprehensive plan. This really, to me, speaks to balance and making sure that as well, as we have considered the economic prosperity of our community, we've also considered the natural environment and protections and protections for historic resources, and that those things are, are happening in a balance, and our community really decides where on, where in the middle those, those priorities that do have touchpoints where they meet. So, you know, all of the, almost all of the GMA goals speak to this. So we have, just as a couple of examples, urban growth itself, that we're not growing and expanding past our, our means, you know, housing, that we have housing stock and we have places available for people, speaks to being a vibrant community that has, has space and can welcome additional people to come and live here.
Also really touches on what makes Tumwater Tumwater. So we have a set of state guidelines we need to do, but we want to ensure that the plan also reflects the desire of the community, both its history and also where it wants to go, and then its uniqueness in that.
Right. So for equity, recognizing too that in Tumwater, we have a diversity of people and we have different groups that want to live here and want to engage, and that we are best served by welcoming that engagement and encouraging those people to be, any people to become part of the, part of the process, essentially. We, through the climate element requirements of the GMA, have looked at the environmental justice piece of our comprehensive plan to make sure that there aren't any inadvertent, inadvertent consequences for any groups of people that would have a negative environmental, negative impact on their environment and would, yeah, that just... and would, yeah, that just would have a negative impact on them. So just highlighting that piece for our community and then being intentional about how we reach different people. Our displacement study attempted to do that. And then also the work with, that elicited with the Thurston Climate Action Team, TCAT, and ensuring a diverse group was heard in that scenario. And then how we have been reaching out in our community and holding different events outside of City Hall to make sure that this, even, even though this space feels comfortable to us, it might not feel comfortable to all people. So making sure that we're being aware and cognizant of those things. All right. Community resilience, this really speaks to how we are going to answer any hazards and emergencies that come up. And the one that is most forefront in this plan is climate mitigation and climate resiliency because it's the new chapter and, you know, we did a really deep dive into how that resiliency really spreads out. And so when you, hopefully, when you read the climate goals and policies, you saw that, oh, well, this is talking about energy code and this is now talking about housing and, well, this is, and it kind of almost seems to spread a little bit. But I think that's because it really touches those points and that was the best housing place we had for that type of emergency. So anyway, that really addresses GMA Goal 14. And let me just give a little synopsis, so that's climate, climate change and resiliency. So that's the new goal from House Bill 1181 that says we need to have those two sub-elements that talk to the climate, greenhouse gas reductions and climate resiliency. And then also our shorelines, we, one of the biggest impacts to our area and going to be exacerbated by climate change is flooding. So considering our shorelines and protecting and arming our shorelines through shoreline policy and protecting properties so that they're not in danger's way is also how we answered that large goal for our community to make it more resilient. Do you want to? No one has comments?
Okay, so good.
Okay, so when we think about being fiscal stewards of the resources our community has and provides to the city to provide services, you know, our transportation plan is fiscally constrained, which means we had to provide proof that we could afford the projects that we said we were going to do. And, you know, we can only see so far down the road in terms of the finances. And Dan did a great job of explaining like how, how those meters and modeling is all met. And at the same time, we can, we can make some guesses at like educated and estimates about what that will look like in the future. So GMA Goal 3 talks about the transportation plan and how it delivers services in the future. And then we also have private funds, so how we administer our permits and how private development is coming into our community and the types of development projects they're doing and making sure our review is adequate and we have the right, let's say, the impact fees and those, those services that kind of wrap around and support the rest of the community plan and as it, as it is feasible to do and not taking resources or taking property and those, you know, which is another one of the goals of the GMA, not to avoid taking. So kind of balancing those two and making sure people are only paying for what they are impacting. So wrapping those up in the transportation plan and even in GMA Goal 8 with the natural resource industries, that people are allowed to develop their property for natural resources in certain areas and that we have allowances for that is a valuable piece as well. All right, environmental protection, phew, there's a lot of things we're doing in this plan. So the, I hope you saw in almost every element that the environment is, is a piece of every part, that it's embedded and weaved throughout because every time we have an action on the land, we need to make sure that action isn't having unintended consequences. So, you know, GMA Goal 2, to reduce sprawl, is one of the ones we are constantly thinking about and really trying to keep our community growing in a fashion that reduces those impacts. And then open space requirements, again, making sure that everyone has adequate access to natural spaces and even just to look out their window and see green places potentially is moving forward in that direction, whether, whether it be a green space. I mean, I, I'm not sure if that's specific goal, just to be so clear. I don't know if everyone is going to be able to look out their window and see a tree. But to have access, one way or another, and even if, even when that access means that we get to have clean air and we get to have clean water to drink, those are all also access points for protecting our environment. All right, so adoption schedule. As we said at the beginning, three separate ordinances are going forward. Dan talked about the second half of the Capitol Facilities Ordinance, which is O-25009. Then the comprehensive plan is O-25010. And then I'm pointing to Erica because she really led the Development Code and you'll see her next meeting. And that is really, oh, so that's ordinance O-25011. Okay, so nine, 10, and 11. And we want to make sure that it's clear what's coming to you and when. And then if you have any concerns or questions about the adoption schedule, please let us know. So SEPA review, I believe SEPA was submitted? Okay, so, and then the notice of intent was also submitted, so our, not October 17th, but October 14th? No, okay.
No, it was submitted on Monday.
13th, okay. So then that moves our timeline up, so December 13th, 2025 is when that comment window closes? So, oh, that may-
Actually, it's, it's the 15th.
Oh, 15th is a Monday. So, yeah, these are two of the open comment periods that we are required to leave for 60 and 90 days. No, 60, no, 30 and 60.
SEPA review will be 21 days. The notice of intent is 60 days.
60 days.
Because 60 days falls on a Saturday.
There we go.
And, and that last one is really supposed to be 11, right?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
As, as, as things change, even as we're able to submit things.
Okay, good. Yeah, good.
Oh, yeah, so just to be also very clear, that SEPA review for both the comprehensive plan and the Development Code are going through at the same time.
And same thing for notice of intent.
So if you find an extra one lying around.
I know, yeah.
All right, so your review process starts today. And this is briefing, so we'll have more opportunity. Like Brad said, we have two work sessions upcoming. But if you feel confident and you have no further questions, there is, did you say there is an opportunity to move the hearing up?
It's, it's up to the planning commission. It's really, I think you probably should wait until you see the Development Code ordinance.
Next time.
Based on what you see there, because that's going to be, we've talked about a lot of the things that are in the ordinance. But we haven't seen that, so I don't know the language.
Okay.
And then hearings planned, for the moment, we have a space holder on November 25th, but it will be at your discretion. Then council review, today.
Dana, just one sec.
Yeah.
It's November 10th.
Yeah, the, our, our regular Tuesday meeting is being moved to the Monday, the 10th.
Oh, because of the century and six. All right. Yes.
And I also remembered that I don't count 14 days from the-
Right.
That math has been corrected, so.
In previous versions, we said that number 24th, but we've updated it. So yes, please mark your calendars and plan to come on a Monday night that week. And if you can't make it, please let us know.
The reminder system will be in full force.
But, and maybe it would be a good opportunity to send out something in advance.
There is, we'll be going out about the meeting.
Yeah, fantastic.
Actually, I think it's gone out.
Oh, great. And so city council review, I think this is actually still in flux and might move up. No, this is?
This is, this is, the reason again, we're doing the 20th, 6th is when the new council. Preference from the council, pretty much be cut clear. AD things, just to have that moment of everybody, welcome to the council.
Okay, right.
That's why we're scheduled for the 20th.
And we're not scheduled any longer on the 27th.
Okay, that, that's the update.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the February, yeah, we're, we're off. You'll have plenty of other things to keep you busy next year, so.
Yes.
So December 9th then is a work session, as correct.
Yeah.
As opposed to-
Joint work session.
It'll be a work, that is correct. So that schedule there has been updated as well.
Okay. Just curious about the joint work session, will that include potentially the new members of the council as a?
It will not include the new council members because they won't take office officially until January. But they will be, will be sitting down with new people.
Okay.
Getting them up as soon as we can.
Okay.
So they're up to speed when they start.
All right, I guess they could attend if they wanted, but-
Our purposes, we sort of need to keep our schedule.
Yeah. Okay.
You don't need a call or anything, there's just no hearings. Well, we'll need a call if you want to officially sit down with the council. I won't hear on the night.
On the 9th, December 9th? Okay.
Can we take it out of time, so we can-
That's right, yeah, the hologram.
I'm glad I'm not missing the hearings, that's definitely.
Okay.
The hearings are not on that date.
So as we wrap up, I just wanted to bring back the two questions. Does the ordinance clearly lay out the process that was followed by staff to develop, review, and adopt the updated comprehensive plan? And then, so I'll just give a second and you can comment on what you've seen already in the ordinance, but then also please take this into your review. Because I don't imagine that in four days, you've read the whole thing. Just a, just a hunch. Maybe at this point I can minimize.
Effort, I wonder, do, do folks online have any comments or remarks?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me either.
Just a lot of thank you, this has been quite a lot of work and it just, it's, it's really important in this whole perspective.
Great, thanks. How about here in the room, any further remarks?
And then do the elements in the ordinance align with the overall comprehensive plan goals? Did you see that?
Pretty concerned that it's got-
Right. And then are there any, any further things that you need in order to answer those questions? That we can provide at the next work session? So the next packet, can we?
Please keep the next packet, I'm digging up, I'm digging through the piles to bring the old-
We'll just see the Development Code in the next pack.
Right. That'll be chunky, right?
It'll be fun. We are going to have a lot of fun.
Okay, very good, very good.
Yes.
Chunky but fun.
All right.
All right. So in the packet that went out, just for this meeting, there's this whole set of-
I have-
Is all of that accurate?
I apologize, in two days since you got the packet.
Oh, so this is no longer accurate?
The packet one is no, yes.
We'll provide you with an updated.
Thank you, I, I really-
We have like limited time to make the packet and then update.
I went through and did this and now I've got Planning Commission, like I'm three weeks consecutively, so I know I've got something wrong.
Yeah, no, you do not have three consecutive weeks.
Okay, there should be some space in between.
Yeah, just to really clean, yeah, so we know, be here, yeah, yeah.
So then, as we look forward to next week, next meeting, then it will be Development Code update?
And with this, we want to touch on 2026 Development Code update. So I don't know if anyone recalls, I was talking about House Bill 5558, which moved up the Development Code update to the December 31st, 2025, and that was primarily concerning middle housing. But there's still the, after the six months, the 2026 updates that are still required. So that's going to be where we talk about subdivision processes, like we didn't have lots of division. So we just wanted to say there still will be another Development Code ordinance update, even after the one I present, the 2025 O-11 ordinance.
Got it.
And that will be in the first hour. The detail really there is to cover everything that wasn't a state required that time by this year. That we want to do as part of the larger comp plan update process, so.
When Dana was talking earlier about what the GMA required and then what there's still plans for that was not required, you didn't mention the food plan.
Right, it's not meant, it's not-
I know it's not required, but it was kind of in the category of not required. And my question was, who takes the lead on that in your whole group?
It will be something that will be working through the work program and will be similar to what we are doing with the housing, things that Erica's taking the lead on the housing, initiatives that we've identified, implementation actions next year, probably anticipate Dana doing that.
Okay.
So we've allocated, we'll see when we renew next month, the proposed work program for next year, time allocated to implement.
Got ahead of you, sorry. All right.
The intention is, now that we've had these, listed on all these draft implementation actions, now is the time for us to start thinking about what are, and that's the start of that process.
I was on a 2025 work plan, right, it was identified as a project. It's referenced in our comprehensive plan, but not necessarily required.
Yeah, and it's not like the Parks Plan, not part of the comp plan. It's just a plan that's been adopted by the city.
Would you, would you say?
It seemed to me that our work on the food plan is done, is now responsible for the city administrator to execute it.
It's actually multiple folks, so we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, but I mean, if we're going to execute it, it should be done by those folks that execute it, planners don't execute.
There are definitely planning related things in there for us to look at and do further. There are also obviously coordination issues with other agencies and nonprofits that also may be elsewhere. So facilities may have a role and so forth. Right.
And then as always, if you want to submit documents, we have the comp plan email and we're looking forward to hearing your comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, just note as well that our first meeting in November is with our officers. So keep that in the back of your mind.
I plan to miss that one.
Okay. Just giving you a bad time.
You know what the rule is here.
No, no.
I'm going to be walking you through again the rules governing such elections and what happens last year.
A what?
No sabotage.
Okay.
Was there sabotage? You have several new members on this one, so it's-
Like I said, we just, we have a bunch of, there are, here, Planning Commission rules of procedure have a process outlined, when it occurs and how it occurs. There's the unwritten rules, however, about campaigning and not getting people who aren't there, that kind of thing.
Right, right. Which somebody just- Which somebody just referred to, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Have to have us out to lunch, you know.
Oh, my goodness.
I was assuming that was all understood, but yes, thank you for that reminder. Thank you. Those rules of procedure are grand.
I also appreciate somewhere in that massive document you sent to us was something about training for the planning commission. I, if you asked me to find it again, I couldn't find it, but I appreciate, I thought, oh, I would really like that.
And we have had trainings in the past with planning commission with the periodic update across your fingers. Rowing, you know, we've anticipated that we'll have that at more as part of the 26 work program. Talking about what kind of training would be appropriate and providing the time for that. Looking
Brad, do we do every, interviews every year or every other year?
I've been doing it every other year. Talk with Sharon about her preference about what she would like to do.
Alright, so next meeting, 28th, development code. Will be our topic and whatever else comes our way.
Any questions that come up about what you read?
Right, right. Right, okay. Um, pardon?
Oh, in the hearing. Yeah, I have a hearing on the CUP, so.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Alright, thanks for that reminder. The utilities hearing, okay. Um, okay. Any other, any other things? Mr. Kirkpatrick?
It's a structural question. We keep talking about the Growth Management Act and we're going to saying you have an act that eventually becomes part of the code. All of the things that we've been dealing with the last year that are House Bill this and House Bill that, House Bill, the other thing, do they end up in the same chapter as the Growth Management Act or are they spread all over the place?
Yeah, for the most part, they're part of RCW 36A 70 or
70A?
70A.
Yeah.
As an additional section of that. In some cases, it drifts a lot, a little bit beyond that, but for the most part, it's almost entirely within that. The middle housing definitely is all of the development code stuff we talked about for 18 years. A year from now, we'll be able to go to the code and see all of that stuff in there.
I think you can go now, it'd be, for 1181.
Yeah, you, all of the things that have been taken through the legislature in 2025 should be codified like on the ICWs. Now, the WACS, the Washington Administrator Code is, are still being written for a lot of these things, which is sort of the guidance for how you achieve the RCWs. We'll probably get that guidance well after everything is done. That's just process. Not making any promises based on what we're hearing from legislators about housing for next year. We anticipate more of us, so.
Right? Well, it looks like we have concluded our business tonight, I'm pretty sure. And so I will declare us adjourned.
Thank you.
At what time is that? I know, exactly. Well, I was, I was, you know, almost went down that path, but then I remembered. Well, I was supposed to say when, it was five of nine.
I will not be here on the night to pick up.
Okay, alright.
But
Good night, everybody.
So, here you go, so a reminder.